Good evening. I'll call to order the Arvada Housing Authority. Kristen Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Pfeiffer.
Here.
Commissioner Marriott.
Here.
Commissioner Mormon.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
We have the minutes of the August 15, 2022 meeting. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, they will stand approved as presented. Is there anybody that wishes to address the City Council who is sitting as the Housing Authority? Seeing none, I'll close that public comment portion. We have one item of new business.
Good evening. This agenda item is regarding Arvada House, which is an existing development located at 101-75 West 58th Place, offering 88 units of senior affordable housing. The owner of this site, Related Affordable LLC, wishes to rehabilitate the 88 units and was awarded low-income housing tax credits to finance the rehabilitation costs. To support Arvada House's application for tax credits, the City of Arvada assigned its 2022 private activity bonds of approximately 6.8 million to Arvada House, and the Arvada Housing Authority competed for and was awarded 4.5 million of additional bonds that were assigned to this project. The Housing Authority also agreed to become a special limited partner for purposes of providing property and sales tax exemption as part of the tax credit application. As part of their rehabilitation, Related Affordable will commit to renew the HAP contract on this property, which means that Arvada House will remain affordable for another 20 years. Arvada House is scheduled to close on their loan in March 2023, and as part of their loan documentation, must provide a special limited partnership agreement with the Arvada Housing Authority. I am happy to answer any questions, but if there are no questions, staff recommends approval of a resolution to allow the Arvada Housing Authority to enter into a special limited partnership agreement with Arvada Senior Housing LP.
And I assume Ms. Morris, you've reviewed that, and it's all?
We have, Your Honor. Ms. Justice from my office has been actively involved in this process, so if you have any questions about the legal terms and conditions of that agreement, she'll be able to answer.
But it passes muster, and it's been approved by the City Attorney's Office. Very good. Mr. Marriott?
If there's no questions, I'd like to make a motion.
You may proceed.
Okay, I move that R-HA-23-01, a resolution authorizing the Arvada House, Arvada Housing Authority, to enter into a special limited partnership agreement with Arvada Senior Housing LP be approved.
Motions for approval. Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
The remainder of the Council, the Commission votes yes as well, so it stands approved. Is there any other business to come before the authority?
No.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll switch hats, and we will reconvene as the Arvada City Council. Call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for March 6, 2023, and call upon Councilmember Smith.
Please join me in a moment of silent reflection. Now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pleading) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Kristen Rush, if you'll do a roll call again.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
All present accounted for. We have the minutes of February the 6th and February the 13th. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, they will stand approved as presented. Next, we are going to have a presentation of the Elks Grant Check to Community Table.
On behalf of the Arvada Elks, we need...
BPO. Jesus Christ. The Protective Order of Elks of the United States of America, I'd like to present this check for $2,000 to the Community Food Bank. This was made available to us through Elks National Foundation, and it is a grant that we get once a year. The Arvada Elks also presents many checks to the Community Food Bank. A couple of people I would like to recognize, one that cannot be here today, his name is Mike Martinez, who puts on two or three pancake breakfasts a year to raise money for the Community Food Bank. Rick Ossman, who just walked away, who was key in getting this grant for them. But I'd like to present it to Rocky and...
Let's make sure you get the check that you're gonna deposit.[374.47][374.47](Applause) Rocky, would you like to say anything, or?
Come on, Rocky. We haven't seen you in a while, so.
Hey, Bob, how's it going?
Good, sir.
Hi, Lisa. Hey, Dave. Yeah, thank you so much. We are seeing record numbers, as I'm sure you guys have heard. It's crazy over there, so this helps a lot. We're buying a lot of food, so thank you so much.
Thank the Elks.[402.28][402.28](Applause) Okay, is there anybody that would like to address City Council on an item that's not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I will close that public comment portion. I've been advised by... Or is there somebody from the... There is not anybody that is on Zoom for that as well. We have one item on the consent agenda, and that's R-23022, which is a resolution acknowledging and accepting the Arvada Police Department's notice of intent to utilize spatial recognition technology in accordance with Colorado Revised Statute 2418-302. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that consent agenda item R-23-022 be approved.
Motions for approval. I see our police chief was here, if we needed to have any input on it, but I think we're in good shape. Mr. Pfeiffer, if I can have your vote. Very good. Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rest of Council votes yes as well. That passes unanimously. We have two resolutions. First is R-23-023, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority, ORA, for the lease of ORA's property located at 5603 Yukon Street, Suite A. Ryan, you're gonna take this?
I certainly can. The AIDA team, working largely remotely through the pandemic, and the city needing to have extra space within the City of Arvada, has agreed to partner with ORA, who will be co-locating in a building on Yukon Street in Old Town. Because they're out and about and really in the community, this is a good opportunity for them to have their own space outside of City Hall, where they can meet with businesses and be closer to the action. So, we are supportive of the lease, so that they can be rehomed with one of our strategic partners.
Okay. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll move that R-23-023, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada and Arvada Urban Renewal Authority, ORA, for the lease of ORA's property located at 5603 Yukon Street, Suite A, be approved.
Motions for approval. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Rest of Council votes yes. I offer my warning to Daniel and his team to watch out for that Urban Renewal Authority Executive Director in terms of... Because when her hair gets on fire, Daniel's gonna be the first to deal with it.[586.41][586.41](Laughter) Next, we have R-23024, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada and North Table Mountain Water and Sanitation District for mutual aid of water during certain emergency and non-emergency events. Ms. Gillis, you're handling this one?
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of Council, this IGA is to supply raw or potable water in an emergency or planned non-emergency event. The city has existing interconnections with North Table Mountain's water system for both raw water and a potable drinking water supply. The IGA ensures Arvada can respond accordingly and provide mutual aid to a neighboring community when in need of safe drinking water. In the event Arvada is in need of aid, the agreement also establishes terms for the purchasing of water from North Table Mountain. The Arvada team recommends City Council approve R-23-024.
Open up for Council question or action. Mr. Pfeiffer, you beat Mr. Marriott to the button this time.
Oh, sorry. Did you want it? Okay. I move that Resolution 23-024, resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the North Table Mountain Water and Sanitation District for mutual aid of water during certain emergencies and non-emergency events be approved.
Motions for approval. All votes cast. Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
Majority of Council votes yes as well. That passes unanimously. Mr. Jones, you want to take us through first readings?
I will. Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 23-005 and ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 54... Sorry. Sorry about that. Reenacting Section 54-36, MTC, Part 8, pedestrians amended of Article 2, mode traffic code of Chapter 54. My... Sorry, my screen is messing up here. Motor vehicles and traffic and adding Section 62-52, obstruction of public passageways to Article 2, miscellaneous offenses of Chapter 62 offenses, and Council Bill 23-006, then ordinance amending Article 4, liquor tastings of Chapter 6, alcohol beverages of Arvada City Code. Public hearings will be approved on first reading or published in full, and a public hearing date will be set for March 20, 2023, at 6:15 p.m.
Motions for approval on first reading. Mr. Jones, how do you vote on your motion?
Yes.
Majority of Council has voted yes as well. That passes unanimously. Next, we have a ratification and approval of CP 2023-004, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado, adopting the 2014 Arvada Comprehensive Plan as Arvada's Three Mile Plan pursuant to Section 31-12-105, 1E of Colorado Revised Statutes as amended. Robert Spantana, you're gonna handle this one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of Council. This is an annual resolution to adopt the Comprehensive Plan as the city's Three Mile Plan. It is our planning document, and it is consistent with the state statute in this instance, and so therefore, we do recommend approval.
Motions for approval. Are you recommending for approval? And Mr. Marriott, you got your light-lit fast on that one tonight.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that CP 2023-004, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado, adopting the 2014 Arvada Comprehensive Plan as Arvada's Three Mile Plan pursuant to Section 31-12-105, IE, CRS as amended, be ratified and approved. This motion is based on findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Motions for approval. Six Councilmembers present have voted yes. How do you vote, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Now I have to stall for 26 seconds before we can start
I could have messed up the first reading. It's a little bit worse.
Yeah, if you had done that a little bit slower.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. We're good. Okay, I will open the public hearings on a major modification for Come and Go Number 2299 to construct a new fueling station and convenience store with a detached fuel pump canopy, where the building does not adhere to the building orientation and configuration requirement of the Land Development Code, Section 5-1-2-6B1, which requires that all non-residential buildings orient to the main pedestrian entrance of the building to a public or private street. Same time, we'll consider the major modification for Come and Go Number 2299 to construct a new fueling station and convenience store with a detached fuel pump canopy, where the fueling canopy does not adhere to the required 40-foot setback from all streets in the Land Development Code subsection 3-1-3-8A3I, which requires fuel pumps, fuel islands, and fueling canopies to be set back at least 40 feet from all streets. And finally, we'll consider with this the major modification for Come and Go Number 2299 to construct a new fueling station and convenience store with a detached fuel pump canopy, where the fueling canopy does not adhere to the required site design standard of the Land Development Code subsection 4-3-3-4F2, which requires the fuel pump canopy to be located behind or to the side of a building in the MX-U Zone District. Robert, you're gonna take this one as well?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of Council. The applicant is requesting the three major modifications that you described, to allow for the construction of a new fueling station on the triangular site located on 64th Avenue between Wadsworth Boulevard and Wadsworth Bypass. The site will be fully redeveloped with a new 3,900-square-foot Come and Go convenience store, and new fueling pumps and associated canopy. In addition to the requested major modifications, three variance requests were also necessary to allow for the development of this project. The Board of Adjustment did approve those variances during their February 7 meeting. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the major modifications, also during their February 7 meeting. We have received the signed posting log and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. The applicant is in attendance for presentation and questions, and we also have Jeremiah Bebo, one of our staff planners here, who is also available to answer any questions.
Very good. The posting log and mailing affidavit will be made part of the record. Anybody that wishes to speak on this matter, applicant or others, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're gonna give in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Very good. If the applicant wishes to make their presentation? Good evening.
I think this is on. My name's Erica Morton. I am with Olson. I'm the civil engineer for the site, and here representing Come and Go. I'm just gonna go through it briefly. We'll try to keep it short and sweet for everybody. You can see the site is at the northwest corner of 64th and Wadsworth. We recently changed, I guess the address recently changed, from 6401 to 6431, Wadsworth Bypass. We have the canopy on the north, kind of in the middle of the site there, the building on the south. The entrance of the building is facing north to be convenient for customers using the fueling canopy. And then we have some additional employee parking and our air machine on the north end of the site with some upgraded landscaping in the triangle area that is kind of empty right now. Here is the landscaping plan. So, we're adding some trees on the north. We're screening the trash enclosure with evergreens on the south, and then we're adding street trees south of the building and on Wadsworth. These are the building elevations. We have four-sided architecture on this site with, I think it's non-transparent glazing on the back, but fully transparent glazing on the north and the east. And then this is the four-pump, double-stacked canopy configuration. We're actually reducing it from six pumps to four pumps. This is a look at what the interior will look like, the kitchen area. This is the interior seating area. If you want to come and hang out for a little bit longer than you typically would at a gas station. This is a look at the aisles and snack area. And then Come and Go also has a lot of fresh, healthy food choices, which I know are lacking in this neighborhood, so that should be a bit of an upgrade for the residents surrounding. So, our major modification approval criteria, I'm not gonna read this whole thing, because I think you guys are probably aware of it, but we're basically just trying to make sure that we're in compliance with the code as much as we can. This is a uniquely shaped site, so we're trying to choose the major modifications, variances that we request to have the least impact that we can, but it was inevitable that we'd have some. The first one, the fuel canopy setback, you can see there's a 40-foot setback line drawn from the property line there. I think we're about 10 feet into it on that northeast corner of the canopy, and you can see in the aerial in the background, we're improving on the existing situation. The building and canopy configuration, you can see there's really zero configurations that we could come up with that would be in compliance with this, since we're surrounded by three public right-of-ways. And then the building entry, so this is kind of a separate one that came up a little bit more last minute, but it's just saying that the entrance to the building should be close to the public right-of-way. Just due to site grading constraints and logistics of how the site is gonna be used, we need to have the front entrance be north towards the canopy. So, what we did is we added some steps on the southeast corner of the building, and then our ADA connection to the right-of-way is on the southwest corner, so you walk between the trash enclosure and the building there. So, like I said, we're trying to bring the site up to code as much as we possibly can, but there's just some, those three items that we really can't meet logistically, like there's no way we could, or even any user could meet it, so we're doing the best we can there, and got creative with the site layout, and it works pretty well. So, hoping you agree. So, our next steps are construction drawings. We, I think, are pretty darn close to approval at this point. We'll go through the construction permit process. I think we're underway with building permit review, and then we will have about a six-to-nine-month construction timeline, depending on lead times for materials and Colorado being Colorado. Any questions?
We'll wait until we've completed the public testimony, and then we'll see if there's any questions. Is there anybody else that wishes to testify on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public testimony portion. Open it up for Council questions or action. Mr. Mormon, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, if you could go back to a good map that would show this, just wanting to, if you could review the way the traffic flow, how cars will be coming in and off the site.
Yep, so we have a right-in, right-out access off of Wadsworth Bypass, so you can enter the site coming southbound on Wadsworth. You can enter from northbound on Old Wadsworth, which is the west, and that's a right-in only. And then we're actually closing the access off of 64th. So then, to exit the site, you have to go right out southbound onto Wadsworth Bypass.
So, you can't exit on Old Wadsworth at all?
Correct. And that's how it is today, too.
Because it's one-way? All right, thank you.
Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, I have a question. Can you go back to a slide that shows the rendering, maybe that second to last slide or last slide you showed?
The last one, it's actually a different site.
Oh, that's a different site?
Yeah. I can show you the elevation.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Particularly, I'm interested in the south elevation. So, that's the bottom one of these four.
The south is the third one down.
Third one down, okay. So, on that one, do you plan on having any signage on that side, even though it's?
No, the signage that is on the elevations is what we're proposing.
Is what you're proposing, okay. Is there a reason you're not proposing signage on that side, if it is parallel to 64th?
Yeah, I think it was just due to the signage requirement. We have a monument sign on the northeast corner of the site.
Yep.
And by the time you get there, so I think we do have signage on the east elevation. So, that's kind of where we're going for the majority of our...
Right.
Yeah, signage from Wadsworth.
Okay. That's the only question I had. I just comment, I think that south elevation is important because it's parallel to a street, and that looks great. Obviously, the building's designed all four sides around and isn't just a cinder block wall, so good job. I think that looks good.
Thank you.
Mr. Mormon?
Thank you. So, on the signage, given that the, as I understand, the only ADA accessible is on the south side, is there gonna be a sign indicating that that's visible? I'm thinking especially folks coming from the west, where the residential area is, and if they wanted to come and use your food market, for example, and are coming in a wheelchair or so forth, is there gonna be a sign to give them a good indication of how they should get there?
Yeah, I think if you're coming from the west, or probably the south on Old Wadsworth even, that is probably the most convenient, like shortest path to take anyway. I think if you're coming from the east, crossing Wadsworth Bypass, then it might be a good idea for us to add some signage to inaccessible route further up 64th, just because that road, you know, slopes pretty steeply as you head west.
So, I guess the question was, will you put up some signage that, wait, wait finding signage for accessible?
Yeah, I think we can.
I think that would help, just for accessibility reasons, because it could be very easy, you get to this island, and you're like, I've lost, I don't know how to get to where I need to go, especially given that there's stairs at the southeast part, so.
It should be, I think it would be visible from the corner, but we'd have to look at, like sightlines, but I think if it, it would help, we can put that signage up.
Great, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Marriott?
I'd like to make a motion, if everyone's okay with that.
There are no other questions. You may proceed.
I move that a major modification from the Land Development Code for Come and Go Number 2299 to construct a new fueling station and convenience store with a detached fuel pump canopy, where the building does not adhere to the building orientation and configuration requirements of LDC subsection 5-1-2-6B1, which requires that all non-residential buildings orient the main pedestrian entrance of the building to a public or private street. Generally located at 6401, Wadsworth Bypass in the City of Arvada, Colorado, be approved. This motion's based on findings of fact, and any conditions, if applicable, adopted by the Planning Commission. And I just want to make a comment to my motion. I think good job to you guys as the applicant. I think this has obviously got to be one of the more difficult places you could possibly put any kind of a retail business and a fueling station, being that it's literally surrounded on every side by a road, and it looks to me like you've come up with a good design, and you've minimized the impacts as much as you can. So, for those reasons, I will be voting yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. Yes, I didn't have any questions. I went over your site plan. I thought it looked really good. This is actually my neighborhood, so I know this grocery mart and gas station very well. I think this is gonna be a very nice improvement over what we've had there for a long time. I'm really excited about the trees, and you're right, we do live in a tiny bit of a food desert right there in terms of fresh food, and so I'm excited to see you guys bringing those options. Heads up that the high school's right there, so expect a lot of teenagers.
I think they're counting on it.
All votes are cast. Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rest of Council has voted yes as well. That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We look forward to seeing it.
We have three of them.
Oh, wait, two more motions.
Two more, yeah.[1712.48][1712.48](Laughter)
Well, I'm betting.
Hold on.[1715.48][1715.48](Laughter) So, I move that a major modification from the Land Development Code for Come and Go Number 2299 to construct a new fueling station and convenience store with a detached fuel pump canopy, where the fueling canopy does not adhere to the required 40-foot setback from all streets in the LDC subsection 3-1-3-8A3I, which requires fuel pumps, fuel islands, and fueling canopies to be set back at least 40 feet from all streets in the City of Arvada, Colorado, be approved. This motion is based on the findings of fact, and any conditions, if applicable, adopted by the Planning Commission.
Motion on this one's for approval. Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rest of us vote yes as well. It passes unanimously. Mr. Marriott, the third one.
Thank you. And finally, I move that a major modification from the Land Development Code for Come and Go Number 2299 to construct a new fueling station and convenience store with a detached fuel pump canopy, where the fueling canopy does not adhere to the required site design standard of the LDC subsection 4-3-3-4F2, which requires that fuel pump canopy be located behind or to the side of a building in the MX-U Zone District, generally located at 6401 Wadsworth Bypass, in the City of Arvada, Colorado, be approved. located at 6401 Wadsworth Bypass in the city of Arvada, Colorado be approved. This motion is based on the findings of fact and any conditions, if applicable, adopted by the planning commission.
Motion's for approval. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Remainder of council votes yes as well. Now we're uniformly approved for all three, so congratulations. With that, I will open the public hearing on the conditional use for the Marshall Point to allow for the construction of an affordable multifamily project within the MXS, Mixed Use Suburban Zone District. Same time, we'll also consider the major modification to waive the requirement in table 2-1-4-2-A of the land development code that requires at least 10% of the net parcel area be developed as a small urban park for Marshall Point, a 4.36-acre parcel of land approximately located at the southeast corner of Marshall Street and West 52nd Avenue. Rob, I understand you're handling these two items as well.
Thank you again. The applicant, as you mentioned, is requesting conditional use approval for a 260-unit, four-story apartment building at the southeast corner of 52nd and Marshall. As mentioned, it is located in the Mixed Use Suburban Zoning District. At the same time, the applicant is requesting a major modification to reduce the amount of the site provided as the required small urban park. The city council has previously approved a conditional use for a project on this site, and that occurred in March of 2021. That proposal was a five-story, 275-unit building. The planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of both the conditional use and major modifications during their February 7th meeting. We have received a signed posting log and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. The applicant is in attendance for a presentation, and we also have senior planner Jake Nicholls for any questions as well.
Thank you. Posting log and mailing affidavit will be made part of the record. I do have some individuals that have signed up to testify on this as well. If anyone who wishes to testify, raise your right hand. Swear affirm the testimony you're going to give, and these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Very good. The applicant may make their presentation.
Good evening. Good evening. Ben Taylor, 1746 North Williams Street, Denver, Colorado. So I'm here today representing Lincoln Avenue Capital. I'm the developer, sponsor, and eventual owner of what we're proposing here today for the Marshall Point Affordable Housing Community. So we'll get started. We'll be breaking this up into each individual expertise, and so as you can see, is Lincoln Avenue Capital will be the developer. We have Kepark Architects here today with us. HKS will be civil engineering. Norris Design is handling entitlements and landscape. We have Fox Tuttle to answer questions on parking, and then JR Engineering performed our traffic study. So you'll have access to each of those individuals if the questions come up. So real quick, my segment that I kind of wanted to talk about here today was affordable housing. So we are working a lot on this project, but I figured I can really help kind of explain a little bit more for those of you that are interested on what affordable housing is, how it works, what we do, and how the true benefit can be realized here in Arvada if we're able to proceed with this project. So Lincoln Avenue Capital itself is a company that operates in about 22 different states, and we manage and operate close to 22,000 units of affordable housing across the country. And so when I say affordable, I mean like the capital A affordable, which is what I consider true affordable housing. And I wanted to touch on just what exactly that is. And so that comes through the affordable housing, low-income housing tax credit. That is a federal program that's been around for close to almost 40 years now. It was introduced in 1986. That program really is used to incentivize affordable housing development across the country and preserve affordable housing as well. And so this, what I've laid out here is through that Lytech program, is what we call it for short, that gives us access to almost $50 million of outside capital to be invested here in Arvada to build this, this development. And that's something that we can't do without it. So it's extremely important, and it also provides a huge value to the community. And I'll walk through that in a little bit, through a little scenario that I put together. To give you an idea of what affordable is and how it works and who lives there, we've outlined, you know, the majority of our residents will be restricted to what's called a 60% of area meeting income, or AMIs, all right? To give you context to that, there are the income restrictions for if there's a one-person household, two, three, and four-person households, okay? So if a one person wants to rent an apartment, they would have to income qualify and make at or below $49,260 this year, which, as you may know, is close to about $25 an hour. And so that really does hit a large segment of the population that can't find housing today but has a lot of jobs that need to be here in Colorado or, and in Arvada, right? And so as the scale of household members go up, so if you have a mom with one or two kids, which is the majority of our residents end up being single moms, that income scale does slide up. Same on the rent side. That is restricted to ensure that each of those residents do not pay more than 30% of their income for housing, which I think a lot of people struggle with, no matter who you are today. And so I wanted to kind of run through first who those people are, give you an idea of kind of the jobs, starting salaries, et cetera, here in Arvada, and then walk through a scenario using kind of our rents. And so one-bedroom rent for that 60% threshold there is $1,243, okay? This development will have a number of, call it, income and rent ranges as well. That's part of the program, is so that we'll have actually some 30% AMIs. We'll have some, a few 70s. We'll have 40s and 50s as well. So we kind of hit a broad spectrum of what is considered lower income or affordable housing. We threw together just a quick slide. I'm sure you all know this, but these are the people that everyone sees every day, and they, how do you live in a town where, you know, average home prices are $5,000, $6,000, $700,000, right? Rents are $1,500, $1,600, $1,700 for a two-bed, you know? And so we just wanted to throw this up there of like, you interact with these people every single day, you see them all the time, and they end up having to commute to come to Arvada. And so this gives people an opportunity to kind of live where they work, which I find very exciting, and I think that's an essential right that people should have. And so I wanted to kind of go through and say, what does this provide for the residents of Arvada that would be able to live at this development? And so I said, there's that most common unit that we have is a one-bedroom. That's at 60% AMIs, okay? So that's $1,243 in rent. And I said, well, what if a market rent in the area, because I believe we're billing at a market rate product quality, call it $1,700, all right? For each unit that we were able to provide then, we take that and say there's about $450 of monthly savings that that individual could save. Take that on an annual basis, and now we're talking about almost $5,500 a year in rent savings. And if you take it over the 30 years of affordability that we're required to do, for each unit, that's $165,000 that someone doesn't have to pay in rent, right? And the compounding factor of what I really love doing here is saying, well, what if we can do this as 260 units? Just in that first year, we're saving 260 residents $1.5 million in rent. And you take that over the 30 years, you're getting to 40, almost $43 million in rent savings that these people can save and use for things that they wouldn't otherwise be able to, right? A lot of our residents struggle between the daily needs of choosing what they're going to spend their money on, saving for that car repair that they need, or even for a down payment on the house. That's the eventual goal here, is to not rent burden someone so much that they can't get out of that ceiling that they just keep hitting because they're spending 40, 50, 60% of their income on rent. And that's what this project does. So we're getting that federal subsidy. Like I said, we're not getting that for free. There's a commitment for affordable housing for a long-term here, and we are required to restrict those rents for 30 years at a very minimum. And so that's what I kind of wanted to lay out here for what Lytech can do and why I think that this is a huge investment and opportunity for the city of Arvada to provide to their future residents for the next 30 years. So with that, I'll be available afterwards to talk through more affordable housing, et cetera, Lincoln Avenue if you need, but for right now, I'll turn it over to Kristen Dean with Norris Design, who will kind of walk you through the rest of the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kristen Dean with Norris Design. We're really excited to be here tonight for this conditional use permit request, and I just want to first thank your amazing city staff for shepherding us through this process. So I think you're familiar with the site. It is at 52nd and North Marshall. So it's a redevelopment infill site. There's just one single-family home and a landscape management company there now. The property is zoned MXS, so it is envisioned for a mixed-use type of development at a suburban scale, and there's quite a bit of varied uses in this area. So we've, we definitely started with the development standards and identifying what those are, and then we've been working within those parameters to design this building and this site. And the reason that we're here tonight is because housing or residential uses are a conditional use in the MXS zoning district. So this is a request for 260 affordable multifamily units, so the site is, the project is 100% affordable. It's been designed with two interior courtyards, and we'll get into some more detail about what the amenity package is for those courtyards. And then we'll have a public plaza along 52nd Avenue, and that will serve as our small urban park. And we also have a mix of surface and structured parking. So we are meeting the development setbacks and, or all of the development setbacks, front, side, and rear, and the parking setbacks, and we are within the maximum height limit allowed under MXS. A traffic study has been prepared for the site. It did show that the use, the 260 uses can be accommodated with the adjacent roadway network. There's a recommendation for a southbound left-turn lane, and so that is being integrated into our design. And also, the design contemplates right-of-way dedication for a future roundabout at 52nd and Marshall. So I'll go into detail a little bit more about that. But our traffic engineer, Eli Farney, is here tonight for all of your traffic-related questions. So just quickly regarding access and a little bit more of the layout, so we do have two points of access. 52nd, there will be a right-in, right-out, but at Marshall, it's a full movement. We have the two points of access. We have 24 to 26-foot wide drive aisles through the site. And then, like I said, we are dedicating right-of-way for the future roundabout. I know that those designs are still in the works, but we're, we wanted to go ahead and be forward-thinking and contemplate that, make sure there's adequate space for that. Parking on-site, I have a couple of updates. So we've been working through the site refinement process now, so at this point, we actually have 392 parking spaces. So that's a correction on this slide. Cassie Slade with Fox Tuttle, she's here tonight as well to answer your parking-related questions. And there is a typo in the slide. She prepared the parking study in 2023, so I apologize for that. And Cassie is the expert in all of the background data related to that parking study, but essentially, they looked at the parking supply and the parking demand for various affordable housing projects across the front range, and they separated out Denver from Brumfield, Arvada, Lakewood, Pueblo, and Greeley, and found that, so outside of Denver, the supply was 1.37 parking spaces per unit, but the demand is actually 0.86 spaces per unit. So they had people on-site at the wee hours in the morning, I believe, to count cars and really understand what is the demand for affordable housing, multifamily developments like this. And in Denver, the demand is actually less, so the supply was 1.09 spaces per unit with 0.69 spaces per unit as the demand. And so we are requesting as a minor modification, a reduction in parking. So I know that's not necessarily part of this application tonight, but it is something that is a part of our overall application as a parking reduction, and we've actually modified that a bit more. So, and I'll go into detail about that in this slide. So when the parking study was prepared, we were anticipating a need for a 15% parking reduction, and the code does allow for parking reductions based off of meeting certain criteria. We fall just outside of the proximity to transit center. However, RTD bus stop is right across the street, and it's an eight-minute ride to Arvada Station. I have a, the slide right here shows the bus route, because during the planning commission hearing, someone brought up that there was not a bus in the vicinity, but I actually called RTD to confirm that the bus actually does stop there and goes directly to Arvada Station and back and forth, and it is an eight-minute bus ride. Where we are now, though, is we're actually looking at a parking reduction of 9% based of the overall parking that's, that the Arvada City Code requires. And so we, we're looking at 392 total parking spaces, and that's a total of 1.5 spaces per unit. And then we are meeting the bicycle parking requirements on-site as well. Okay, so I am going to turn this over to Carl Rungy. He is our lead landscape architect on the site, and he will discuss our amenities.
Good evening, Carl Rungy, and I'm very excited to be here tonight and get to talk with you all about some of the amazing offerings that we're bringing to this project. Kind of just looking at the site overall from a higher level, we're meeting all of the different buffer requirements that we have for this site. We have any sort of privacy screening through fencing and different things like that. All of that is being met around the periphery of the site. We have an amenitized urban plaza at the corner of Marshall and 52nd, and that will actually wrap around that north and that west edge of the property to help kind of, you know, transition the private and public spaces to make it feel welcoming and inviting and an integral part of the surrounding fabric. We also have two interior courtyards, and each one's amenitized and geared towards slightly different uses and demographics of people, which we'll get to in a second. And there will be an onsite manager and maintenance staff with this project to take care of all of the upkeep, maintenance, anything that potentially goes wrong, you know, irrigation or things like that. Everything will be handled in a prompt and timely manner so that, you know, the ongoing curb appeal of this is maintained and assured. So we have two courtyards. We have a north courtyard and a south courtyard. The north courtyard, generally speaking, is programmed towards individuals. So we've jam-packed a lot of things into these courtyards. As Ben stated, this is, this is designed to be a market-rate community. The fact that it's affordable has had no influence on the level of amenities, the quality of design, or the offerings that we're bringing to it. So with that, we have a lot of different things that we're proposing in this courtyard space. Outdoor seating for a variety of different people. A lot of it will be ADA accessible, so it's, you know, friendly towards people that have impairments or other things like that. Different scales of it, large gathering tables for people that want to get together for potlucks and things like that. Smaller seating nodes for people that kind of want to sit on their own, read a book, kind of have some time to relax. Covered seating as well as open seating. We're proposing a hammock grove that would be a place for people to kind of, you know, hang out, hang out, read a book, have an opportunity for respite after a long day of work, and just get to relax and enjoy this nice space that they have the opportunity to live directly next to. We have outdoor grill and dining areas, so providing grills and opportunities for people to prepare food, gather, and enjoy the beautiful Colorado weather that we all appreciate so much. Mixed-use courts. We have a flex lawn space. People can lay out, throw a ball around, toss a frisbee, do some yoga, or just sit around, read a book, have a picnic with the stuff that they just grilled up in the dining area, different things like that. We wanted to be really, we didn't want to curtail this space to have, to, to unique of opportunities. We really wanted to provide as much flexibility and opportunity for residents as we can. And so we took a more, a less prescriptive approach and really providing an open canvas that people can do what they want with. We didn't want to get too specific of, oh, there's only these types of things that you can do. You know, this is a space that you can come here, and if you've got a kid with you, you can do some different types of things. If you're there to just enjoy by yourself, you can do it. If you're there with a friend or two, you know, it lends itself to all these different activities. Cut Flower Garden is another one. We wanted to bring kind of some sensory opportunities into this space, things that people can, you know, get their hands on, interact with, get a little bit more up and close and personal. get a little bit more up and close and personal with, and really just enjoy the intricacies of the landscape that we envision in this space. Then we move into the south courtyard. The south courtyard is geared towards workforce families and offers a lot of different amenities. As Ben mentioned, a lot of the expected demographic is single mothers with one or two children. And so knowing that there's going to be a lot of children here and that there's going to be, you know, a need and an opportunity for them to get out and explore, we wanted to provide this space with, with as much flexibility and freedom and chances for that exploration and discovery as possible. We have three different types of playground areas. Number 11 denotes a top lots. That would be geared for your two-to-five-year-old range. We have number six is a more timber kind of natural playground. Opportunities for kids to climb, you know, run around, swing on things and stuff. That would be geared more for your eight-to-12 range. Number five is a berm hill, so that would be something that, think back to when you're a kid, and one of the most fun things to do is just run up a hill and roll down it. Trying to bring that into the courtyard, right? And so looking at this space as something that's not just a flat plain, how do we give kids the opportunity to really run around and kind of just get wild with it? We have something, number 10 is what we're calling a discovery, discovery path, similar to the flower garden in the other courtyard. An opportunity for people and the kids to really get down, get their hands dirty, feel the plant texture in there, smell the smells, and see the different things that are happening at that kind of more microscopic level that we often forget about as adults, but that is so fascinating and interesting as kids. We also are proposing a climbing kind of area, number seven. That would be something that would maybe be a freestanding kind of bouldering feature, something that promotes challenge and kind of, you know, invites kids to kind of, yeah, challenge themselves a little bit more, get outside of their comfort zone, but then also something that, you know, they can hide behind, run around for a game of tag, just introducing as many elements into these spaces as we can. And similar to the north courtyard, again, providing both shaded and open seating opportunities, different varieties of seating so that parents can sit around, keep eyes on their kids. They can get together and enjoy a coffee or, you know, sit around and talk a little bit while their kids are running around. And the idea is that they can have their pockets of space within this kind of larger matrix that is geared towards the children and the younger demographics at the end of the day. With that, I'll turn it back over to Kristen.
Thank you. Great, thank you. You probably, that, that was a lot of detail around the courtyards and the onsite amenities, but that is the segue to our request for a reduction in the small urban park area. Because what we wanted to show you is that we, we truly are providing park space onsite for the residents for a myriad of reasons. And especially that related to maintenance and just access. To try to open up these interior courtyards to the public to meet your small urban parks requirements is just not feasible. And we really wanted to create a space where it felt like a collective community gathering space for the residents here and also provided that park experience. And so the small urban park that we've designed into the site is a nice amenitized plaza along 52nd and Marshall. And so there we will have enhanced pavers, seating, landscaping. So we're really trying to make the experience along Marshall and 52nd definitely much more improved than today. And it would also provide some additional gathering opportunities as well. So the, the code requires 10% of the site be small urban park. And that would be, 10% would be 18,418 square feet. With our urban plazas, we are at 9,452 square feet or 5.1% of the total site. But when you do calculate in the courtyards, we actually are at a total of 29,481. So that's actually 16% of the site. So while it's not public, you know, the, the courtyard areas are not public, we are still actually exceeding what would be essentially an urban park requirement onsite. And we also want to note that whenever the small urban parks requirement cannot be met onsite, a fee and lieu has to be paid. And so Lincoln Capital will pay the fee and lieu. And that funding will actually go towards other city parks for improvements, maintenance, or any other programming that you guys might identify as important. So they're still contributing to the overall parks requirement for the community, but we're just not meeting that small urban park requirement onsite per the strict interpretation of the code. So that is our major modification request. So Chad is here with Cupart to talk about the architectural design and intent. And just real brief, just, just so you have an idea of how much, we just want you to be, we want to make it clear how much thought we've put into the design of the site as it integrates into the existing fabric of the city.
Good evening. My name's Chad Gleason. I represent Cupart Architecture, Community, and Planning in Denver. And as Kristen and Ben have said, for this project, we've put a lot of time, dedication, and care into the development, both of the plans, the elevations, and the overall look of the building. As you can imagine, a project of this size, where we're taking up kind of more or less a city-block-sized building wrapped around a structured parking garage, it's a little difficult to achieve a more human scale to the elevation. So what we've done is, is provide, you know, various vertical stratification of the, of the elevations to provide more of a, particularly if the entry is a base kind of main lower layer and your top. So the views here you're seeing is, is the main entry leasing area, which has a kind of warmer tone, more, more touchy material. So a kind of a woody-ish material. And the main body of the building is going to have more of a board and batten. And we've dispersed, that's not it. Is that all we got? Two flats for elevations? Okay, I can go back. So here's a couple of the street views from, I believe this is Marshall Street. And the building's broken up also vertically with balconies, kind of accent materials along the windows. And different coloring, just to give kind of a smaller scale to a really large product. That's about it for elevations.
Okay, so we're about to wrap it up. I have listed the criteria for decision for conditional use, and we feel that we meet those criteria. And it appears from the staff report that staff agrees. So let's see. And then we also feel we meet the criteria for the major modification. And so let's see. We are here at City Council, and following this, ideally, we'll have approval, and then we will continue to move forward with the site plan. So thank you very much, and we are happy to take questions.
Very good. Let's hear what our public comment is. Vanessa Kendrick, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce.
Hi, Council. I am Vanessa Kendrick, and I am here today on behalf of the Arvada Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. On February 22nd, the board reviewed the proposal for the Marshall Street Apartments. So the Arvada Chamber has committed to increasing our stock of income-aligned housing through their bold 2026 initiative to ensure that businesses across our community are able to attract and retain talent that they need to meet the needs of Arvada. The board is in strong support of this project. The supply of local workforce housing, specifically an appropriate quantity at reasonable price, has not kept up with demand in Arvada. Housing costs in Arvada are higher than state averages. The 2022 median home price in Arvada was 625,000, while the average income needed to purchase a home is 140,000. Rent for a two-bedroom apartment is 47% higher in Arvada than Colorado average rent. And as mentioned, the Marshall Point project is for a Lytec community targeting 30% to 60% AMI, representing a two-person household at 28,000, up to a four-person household at 70,000 income. Demand for this housing is evident Arvada-wide. Across all of our city zip codes and job categories, median annual earnings are below 52,000 a year, according to Lightcast data. Additionally, as outlined in the City of Arvada Comprehensive Plan, the Lincoln proposal aligns with criteria designed for the Gold Line Corridor, transit-oriented development influence areas. Maintaining alignment with the documented plans for Arvada will support a favorable environment for future development. The board recognizes that the investment and revitalization of the Marshall Corridor will support long-term improvements and opportunities for businesses and residents who live and work in the area. The Marshall Point Apartments have the potential to anchor several hundred essential workers in public and private sector jobs in our community and will lead to improved recruitment and retention for employers across Arvada. We greatly value your thoughtful evaluation of local perspectives and opportunities associated with the Marshall Point Apartments.
Thank you. Mike, I always butcher your last name, Papantakis. Not even close. Just Mike P.
Yeah, Mike P. is fine. It's Mike Papantakis. And I've been a resident of Arvada for 32 years, and I have worked in Arvada for a number of years. I'm in Old Town Arvada with my office. I'm in real estate, RE/MAX Alliance, and we're right across from the, the train station there on Grandview. So I'm very much in support of this project. I've seen a similar project that I had the opportunity to tour last year in West Adams County. And the, very worthwhile project for us, especially for supporting the businesses in our community and providing housing that their workforces can live in and afford. Vanessa brought up the median price in Arvada last year was 629,000, compared to the other metro areas, or the Denver metro median housing price is 555,000. So, you know, the word's out, Arvada's the place to be. You guys have done a great job, city staff, managers, and city council of making Arvada very desirable. And I think we need to make sure that we can provide the housing that we need for all of the people that, that come here. So we hope you approve this plan.
Thank you. Andrew Hesacker.
Hello. Andrew Hesacker, owner of Arvada Rentals. And I've, I have occasion to know all of you, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about this project. So Arvada Rentals has several things that make us unique from our competitors and from other types of businesses. They did a very good job of their presentation of framing out the importance of projects like this in our city. One thing that they pointed out was, most of the places that they had were large businesses, and they were mostly geared towards retail, which is great from an economic development standpoint. Speaking from the perspective of a small business owner, just some, some kind of, I guess, facts. So we have 32 employees, and 10 of them live in Arvada. So basically, 80% of our staff can't even afford to actually live in Arvada and work for us. So it makes it a big challenge. And a lot of people, when I say that, they're like, oh, well, maybe you just need to pay them more. You know, it's like, that, that's kind of a mentality. However, with our industry, I'm a big metric guy. And we're at the top tier in our industry of payroll as a percentage of total revenue. We also take very, a lot of pride in the fact that, excuse me, we, we don't have to look for employees. When we're, we opened up three jobs this, this spring. And of those three jobs, we had about 50 applicants for each position. So we're very fortunate that we've created a good culture. We take a lot of pride in that. However, it makes it challenging when the majority of our staff can't even really afford to live where they work. And we actually have to go to Westminster, Wheat Ridge, Thornton, those types of areas. So I'd like to definitely provide my support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience that would like to address City Council on this matter? If you'll come forward.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the Council, Scott Shields with Family Tree. And I'm here tonight as a representative of Family Tree. We are an organization here in the Denver metro community. We've been here for 45 years, working on the interconnected issues of child abuse and neglect, domestic violence and homelessness, to promote safety, healing, and stability for our community. We also are property owners in the immediate vicinity of the Marshall Point Apartments project, and we're, and we're in support of this development. One of our cornerstone values at Family Tree is that everyone needs a safe place to call home. And affordable housing, as we know across the country, Colorado, the metro region, and certainly Arvada, as you've already heard tonight, that need and that challenge to increase and, and address the issues of affordable housing is a critical barrier to having people able to have a safe place to call home. We know that this project at Marshall Point Development will create 260 units of safe, affordable housing, and will create those needed places for people to call, a safe place to call home. And then, and for that reason, we're in support of this project. We also have had the occasion over the past year or so to be in several conversations with representatives of Lincoln Avenue Capital. And we believe that they are very committed to the community and to doing right by it. And this project, I think, is very much evidence of that. So tonight, as a representative of Family Tree, we're urging you to vote yes on the conditional use application and the major modification for the Marshall Point Apartments. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else? And I believe we have one by Zoom.
They're no longer on.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, I believe that then closes the public testimony. If the applicant, I don't think you need any rebuttal, obviously, because all testimony has been in support. But I will open it up for City Council questions. Ms. Simpson, you've reserved the motion. Do you have some questions as well?
Just a couple.
Go ahead.
Okay. My first is about the parking garage. It seems immediately adjacent on that wall to the southern courtyard. I was going to see, is that going to be a solid wall, or is there going to be open air?
It will be open air.
And if you could come to the microphone when you're answering questions, please.
Sorry. The parking garage is open-air on that southern facade, but since it is a ramped, it's a structured parking with ramps on both sides. So that area ramps up to a higher elevation than the courtyard proper.
Okay. That's totally fine. I was just going to make sure, you know, if kids are tossing a ball around, it doesn't necessarily go through, hit a car, or God forbid.
Yeah, a lot of times, we'll have openings, but there'll probably be a mesh screen along those openings to prevent any kind of, anybody falling over, climbing up into the garage, any ball mishaps or anything that happens.
Perfect. And that's great. And then I love the idea of the, the courtyards as sort of like these internal parks. I'm a mom, I have a six-year-old. You're absolutely right about the kids rolling down the hill. I see them doing that all the time at my daughter's kindergarten. And so the one thought I had there was maybe building a sledding run, because kids will want to sled when that snow comes down in the, in the winter. So, but otherwise, I, I love the white and the wood. I think they look really good. Do you have a particular wood you're going to be using on that area?
It's, it's a kind of vinyl wood product, so it's like a cherry zebra wood kind of color. It's a little, little exotic, but it, it provides a nice contrast to the, to the white.
I like that. And do you know what types of trees you'll be using in the, in the courtyards and along the plaza?
That's more, Carl.
So for the trees, it kind of varies depending on which area we're talking about. In the plaza spaces, we're trying to rely more on ornamentals, things that have a lot of visual interest, year-round variety in terms of color, texture, things like that. Along the streetscape, we're picking deciduous canopy shade varieties that are, we pulled directly from the City of Arvada's approved plant list. There are specific kind of guidelines and recommendations that they have for things that do particularly well here. So we're not trying to reinvent the wheel in terms of putting something there that might not do well. We'd rather make sure that, you know, we're going to have a nice established tree and have many years. And then in the courtyard, it's kind of a variety. We do see some evergreen texture coming into there to kind of make it that, not forested feel, you know, but kind of a little bit more visually buffering. There's going to be a lot of units looking down into these spaces. So knowing that there's going to be kids running around, we want to try and buffer the sound a little bit through evergreen texture and different things like that. Upright evergreens, things that kind of provide a little bit more value impact for the verticality of the space and kind of complement what's happening with the vis, with the architecture and along these edges. But then there will also be shade trees as well. The ornamental trees kind of along the hammock grove, again, for providing those sensory experiences and visual opportunities and stuff. experiences and visual opportunities and stuff for when you're laying down, you know, looking up at the sky and things like that. So that's a long answer for a short answer if there's a lot of variety going on. We're trying to make it a very ecologically vibrant and attractive community.
Excellent. I think that's great. My only note would be just to encourage you to make sure to look at low water-intensive trees.
Absolutely. We're trying to make this as environmentally responsible as we can, so we use the Arvada, the City of Arvada plant list as kind of the starting point. And then our company, we do a lot of, we specialize a lot in Xeric and Waterwise Design, and so we're taking all those principles, which are things that honestly we do on every project these days because of where we live and everything, but absolutely, that's a huge consideration for the decisions we're making.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. I've got some questions for Mr. Taylor, to come on up to the podium. Can you give me an idea on the total cost of this project, including the land, including the construction, ready to occupy? Just round numbers, you don't gotta give it to me.
$120 million.
Okay. And how much in tax credits have you been awarded?
We have not been awarded yet, so that application's soon to come. But that would be approximately $55 million in tax credits.
Okay. And what, any other public money in it?
No. Well, there will be, it's effectively the way these are structured, I can see you doing the math, there's about 30, about, I would call it 40% of our capital stack is tax credit equity. And then the remaining 60 is some form of debt. There is, we will be applying for supplemental loan, or gap loan, call it, from the Division of Local Affairs, or Division of Housing. So that's one component, they're about $10 million.
Is that a loan that you pay back?
That's a loan that we pay back. Yep, low-interest loan.
That's just a loan.
Correct. And then there will be another, so doing my math, probably about $60 million, I think, for, of a permanent financing. So that would be another loan.
Right, okay. And when you go to sell those tax credits, what do you anticipate as a sale price on those tax credits? What are they trading hands at these days?
Say 88 cents, you can call it 90 cents, freeze the math.
About 90 cents? Okay, all right. Let me ask you a question about operations. You had a slide about, you know, a starting wage for a Starbucks worker and a starting wage for a City of Arvada Parks worker. And so let's say the two of them are a couple, and they qualify to rent a unit in your place. And a couple of years go by, and they both make it into management, they excel at their jobs. Do you guys, as you operate these things, do you ever have people re-qualify or recertify? Or does their rent change as their job situation changes? Or are, once they're there, they're there and they're in, and the unit only turns over if they choose to leave?
The latter, I would say. So Section 42 protects people that come in and get, I'll call it, higher income, so there's an initial qualification that you have to qualify for. You would, typically, the way these work is for 15 years, that development is operated as a single development. We have to own it and operate it and qualify people for 15 years. At the 15-year mark, there's typically a capital event. Our plan and what we do on all the developments that we own around the country is that you call it, you resyndicate them. You get more tax credits, you renovate the project. At that time, they would not qualify for the income qualifications, and they won't be able to live there continuing forward. But once you are in, you are in, as part of the federal Section 42 tax credit code.
So once, you just qualify once, and from there, it doesn't matter what happens to your income, if you choose to stay there, you get to stay there.
There are annual reporting that happens, so we go through an annual reporting and qualifications process every year that's sent to the state, et cetera, but we don't kick people out because they make too much money after they move in.
Okay, okay. And then I think one of your slides showed that this was 100% affordable unit, so there's no market rate units in there at all. If someone who's looking for a place to live shows up at your leasing office and says, I'm an engineer at this engineering firm, and I need a place to lease for the next year, your leasing office says, sorry, this isn't the place for you, you need to find somewhere else? Or do they lease them a unit at a higher price? What happened?
Unfortunately, the former is correct there. They're unable to live if your income qualifications, if you're over income, you're unable to live at the apartment community. We'd be in non-compliance of it.
Right, okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mormon?
Thank you. Councilmember Simpson took one of my questions about Xeriscaping, but I did have a landscape question related, I guess. Is there an opportunity, or have you considered a community garden in one of the courtyards? And I ask that because it's such a, I think, an integral part for both kids and families to be able to get in the soil and, you know, and to be planting things and planting food and so forth. And since they live in an apartment, they don't have a yard to do that.
We talked about it early on, and kind of what we came up with was, is there a way to kind of provide those sensory opportunities and things through that discovery path and like the cut flower gardens and things that we talked about? What we find in other projects that we work on is that community gardens oftentimes end up becoming underutilized after a number of years, and so it's space that you can't really get back. And so we wanted to think about what was the most impactful way that we could design these spaces for ongoing success. You're right, they are really good opportunities for things, and so, you know, we're working through the site plan process right now, and so we can take that feedback and, you know, take it into consideration. Maybe there's ways to sneak it into different corners or things like that, or provide some element of it. But our thinking kind of generally was that we could do more with the space for more people by focusing on some of the other amenities that we've proposed in the design.
Okay, I appreciate that. And yeah, if there's a way to creatively do it, I would encourage you to do so, because I think that's such a value. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you for asking.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
Yes, one of the things that I noticed in the two courtyards, there is no pet relief area, and I think we'd be naive to say that these people wouldn't have animals. So what have we discussed with the team about where pets would be? My assumption is in some of that free space courtyard, you're gonna have your dogs go in the bathroom, and it's gonna cause issues in the community.
I'll take that one. So that's a really good question, and we're still going through with our management company as well as our asset management group, formulating kind of our pet policy on this. We will definitely allow pets at the property. I could envision not allowing them in the courtyards just simply because that's more of a family and person-focused area. And we are probably need to have pet relief stations outside of the property along the right-of-way, and then there is the park just kitty corner to where the development is. So it's not formal, but we're open to recommendations and suggestions.
Well, I appreciate that you talked about, historically, low-income areas don't utilize parking spaces the way that Marbury Housing would do. And you're in a goldmine where there's a bus stop right in front. We're hurting for bus stops in Arvada. So, you know, I would be supportive of the idea of reducing it to allow for a pet relief area, because we see, the data says, you don't need 1.5 spaces in those affordable units, so that's a thought I would consider. I don't know if the rest would agree with that, but, I mean, if the data is showing us that it's less utilization for parking, it would make sense.
I'd rather have grass than asphalt, so yeah.
That's it.
Okay. I'll ask this on behalf of Mr. Mormon. I see that you've got some balconies in this. I figured you would. Are you gonna have any restrictions on storage on the balcony areas?
From a management's perspective, yes. You know, we, balconies are gonna be used, sit-down views, not for bike storage, hanging off the sides, putting satellite dishes out there. We really try to keep the aesthetics in the exterior clean, consistent, and proper. So that's a really big policy that I push for on a lot of our properties, because they can be an eyesore if they're not managed well.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Simpson, you reserved the motion. You may proceed.
All right, thank you. I moved that the conditional use for Marshall Point to allow for the construction of an affordable multifamily project within the MXS Mixu Suburban Zone District, a 4.36-acre parcel of land approximately located at the southeast corner of Marshall Street and West 52nd Avenue in the City of Arvada, Colorado, be approved. This motion is based upon the findings of fact of any conditions, if applicable, adopted by the planning condition. And this motion is based on the, oh, yeah, sorry, there we go. And I'll just take a quick moment to commend everybody involved in this project. It's really beautiful, frankly. I love the whites, I love the woods. I love the courtyards and the focus on families. This is something that we need in this part of town, workforce housing just across the city. And so I'm in a very enthusiastic yes on this project.
Mr. Fiver?
Yeah, I just wanna echo that as well. You're hitting a need in our community. I mean, we've talked about affordable or attainable housing or apartments, but I think you truly brought something of a product that we desperately need. I appreciate the fact that the chamber has come here and talked on your behalf, because they do represent our businesses within our community, and it's a collaboration between all of us, the government, the chamber, the businesses, and the development community coming together to solve a problem. And I genuinely believe you are solving a problem in our community. You know, compared to where I was 12 years ago when I came here, or '24 when the mayor's here, to where we are today, society's changed. The needs and the demands of our community have changed, so I appreciate it. I also appreciate the fact that we have a nonprofit that showed up here, Family Tree, I think he left already, or is he, there he is, as well, who recognized the needs and comes in there and brings an additional element to that collaboration. So I think you brought a really well-defined product. You know, would I like it to do a little bit more of, I think you can hear us all would like, but we also understand you worked within the constraints while bringing a quality of life for those folks that can't. And speaking on the behalf of my son, who makes less than $25 in mental health, I think that you're hitting a need where folks can't go into a profession that our communities need very desperately, and yet can't have a quality of life nor live in a community where they were raised. And so I know we echo it. I think those that have adult children have echoed that concern. I know I'm only looking at you, if you have a team here. But I appreciate what you brought to us today, and of course, I'll be supporting your product and your development.
Mr. Mormon?
Yes, I'm really impressed with what you brought forward today, and as my colleagues have said, you're addressing a great need. It's probably, well, it is long overdue that we look at this and have these kind of developments in our city, so I really appreciate that. I like the creativity that you've used, and kind of my judgment is, is this a place that I would like to live? And I would say definitely yes from what I've seen tonight, so thank you for that and all the time you put into it to get it to that kind of product that we need here in Arvada. Thank you.
And Mr. Mormon, if you'll cast your vote. Very good. I'll be supporting the motion. I think it's a good project. It's clearly what we need. We recognize that we do need to have workforce housing in our community. We're, as is everyone else, we're woefully short. I do, I'll echo Mr. Pfeiffer. It's great to have the Chamber of Commerce engaged on this, and that it's part of their bold initiative, and you're following up with not just words, but strong support for something that we need in our community, so I want to thank the chamber for that as well. Mr. Jones, how do you vote on this?
I vote yes. Thank you.
And the rest of us have voted yes as well. That passes unanimously. Ms. Simpson, if you'll make the last motion?
All right. I moved that the major modification to waive the requirement in Table 2-1-4-2A of the LDC that requires at least 10% of the net parcel area be developed to a small urban park for Marshall Point, DA 2022-0070, a 4.36-acre parcel of land approximately located in the southeast quarter of Marshall Street and West 52nd Avenue in the City of Arvada, Colorado, be approved. This motion is based on the findings of fact and any conditions, if applicable, adopted by the planning commission.
Motion's for approval of the major modification. Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
Majority of council votes yes as well. That passes unanimously. Very good. Congratulations. Go forward, do good things. Thank you. And then do we have anybody who wishes to address city council at this time during the five-minute limit? Very good. I'll close the public comment portion. Any reports from city council? Mr. Mormon, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to announce I'm having my monthly coffee chat on March 31st, Friday, from 2:00 to 4:00 at Sweet Bloom Coffee Roasters on Wadsworth and 77th, and invite anybody to come and join me.
Good. Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. So I actually held my town hall this past weekend, the North Jefferson County Town Hall, with County Commissioner Tracy Kraptharp and Westminster City Councilor Sarah Nermella. We discussed utilities, so we talked about water, fiber, and also Excel came and spoke about natural gas and electric rates. I will be posting that on my social media channels, so if you're interested in catching that recording, please do. Otherwise, we had a very special guest here in Arvada today. The Vice President of the United States of America gave a speech at the Arvada Center. Sorry, I just like saying the Vice President of the United States of America came. Vice President Harris was here, hosted by Congresswoman Pedersen, Governor Polis, and State House Representative Lindsey Doherty of HD24 here in Arvada. So it was a great speech, it was a well-organized panel. Just a big thank you to the entire Arvada Center team. They kind of got a major federal dignitary landed on them within a week's notice, and thank you to our city team and the Arvada Center team who made that possible with the logistics, and the Arvada Police Department who were out there doing immense traffic control.
Very good. Mr. Jones, did you have anything?
I just wanted to say thank you to the city team for making sure that all of the technology is available so I can join you remotely this evening.
And we're thrilled to have you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gillis, anything from you?
Nothing from me.
Ms. Morris, anything from you?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
Very good. We stand adjourned. Thank you.